The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
I'll call to order a regular meeting of the Wayburn City Council, held in the council chambers here, 6:00 PM, Monday, December 12, 2022. I would like to make note that I'm sitting in for Mayor Roy, who is away today, and also Councillor Mickel is not here today. I'd like to welcome everybody in the audience today, and welcome you all here today. And first of all, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting from November 28, and our strategic planning and priorities meeting from November 28.
Your worship, I'll make that motion.
I'll second that, your worship.
Councillor Jenke and Councillor Morissette, all those in favor? Carried unanimously. Are there any additions to the agenda?
Not tonight, your worship, thank you.
Any councillor members have additions to the agenda? All right. There are no public hearings or notices today, and we'll move forward to delegations, proclamations, and petitions. First on the agenda is Mr. Sean Abrams, who would like to speak on the... Oh, Dan, sorry.
Yeah, thanks, your worship. Just a preamble. So Sean Abrams has been approved as a delegation tonight to present on the topic of the 2023 proposed budget. Mr. Abrams will be presenting information regarding a public forum held December 6 regarding the city 2023 proposed budget and some feedback received at that forum. Please note, spokespersons for any delegation shall be limited to three people, and the total time allowed for any one delegation to make its presentation shall not be more than 15 minutes, and then avail themselves to questions from members of city council.
Thank you, Mr. Abrams, please.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, and senior administrative staff for giving me this opportunity to exercise my right of free speech, my right of engagement in democracy, and my right to hold elected officials accountable. These are rights and obligations that should not be taken lightly, and that should be done in a respectful manner. To start, it is very important to begin this presentation with what brought us here before getting into discussing the citizen-sponsored public information and education meeting that was held on December 6 regarding the city of Wayburn's proposed 2023 budget. The meeting was an effort that was made by a group of concerned citizens to get the people of this community re-engaged into what happens in our community, the city of Wayburn. I will stand up and be that person that the city or others may want or feel the need to persecute, harass, and take retribution against, because we have and will continue to re-engage and be involved in the activities of our local, provincial, and federal governments, an action we call community accountability and transparency. The citizen-sponsored public meeting came to be as a result of a number of factors. These include, but are not strictly limited to, the almost unheard-of proposed double-digit 10.34% property tax increase as proposed by the city, discussions between people regarding the impact of an increase that... the high impact of an increase on their already stretched-to-the-limit incomes, discussions between people that the city had lost touch with what is happening within our community, discussions between people that it did not matter if they sent an email or wrote a letter protesting the increase, the city would do what it wanted, the city would just ignore the people, discussions between people about the state of the infrastructure and the cost of the Sparks Center, and concerns about what was actually in the budget and how to find out. In the current economic times, the burden of such a tax increase will only add to the failure of our local economy, put unnecessary pressure on family units, and most likely result in people moving away from Wayburn to places where job and employment opportunities are available. Given the receipt of 88 written comments at the end of the city of Wayburn's passive public process, a public meeting was suggested to inform and educate with the goal of increasing engagement of the residents of the city of Wayburn, a meeting where people could ask questions and receive respectful answers, even if those answers were, "I do not know, you should ask the city." The budget is a complex and confusing document, and we considered that people may want to have time to review it and ask questions for clarification. Providing a safe, nonjudgmental environment to do this, along with a time period that would accommodate various works and personal schedules, were key considerations. Hence, the public library and a time period from 1:30 PM to 8:00 PM. The city was quick to detach themselves from this meeting, rather than reaching out and offering to assist in the provision of clear information and help people understand the budget, or encouraging people to get involved. Why would the city detach? We don't know. Would the council hold such a meeting or a number of such meetings in the future? Again, we don't know. It is important to understand the background of municipal budgets when talking about the public meeting. I acknowledge council may know all this, but not everyone who watches this meeting or has watched the process to date may have the necessary information. Having a budget is a legislated requirement of the Provincial Cities Act. The Cities Act is what the province uses to create cities and provide guidance, minimum standards, of how governance in the larger urban municipalities within the province of Saskatchewan is to take place. The requirements for budgets are in the Cities Act. The city's regulation, which is a supporting document to the Cities Act, sets out the requirement for financial reports at the end of each year. Ultimately, the province controls the creation and operation of a city, generally through its Ministry of Government Relations and the Cities Act, by transferring duties and responsibilities to locally elected councils. Cities must follow all provincial and federal legislation. This is why the provincial government should always be aware of citizen interactions with their municipal councils. Section 131 of the Cities Act states that a city may only make expenditures that are included in an operating or capital budget or otherwise authorized by its council, or for an emergency, or for an expenditure which is legally required to be paid. Council is also to establish procedures to authorize and verify expenditures that are not included in the budget. We have heard the city provide the reason for passing this budget so quickly before the end of 2022, is to allow the city to put out tenders and hire contractors with the hope of getting a better price. The question is then, what happens if the city does or did not pass the operating and capital budgets at this meeting or before the end of the year? It means that the issuing of tenders and the hiring of contractors and consultants will be delayed. There are no price guarantees, early or tendering will result in savings. And because the city of Wayburn Administrative Bylaw 2003-2093 provides the authority to the city manager to make routine expenditures required for the city to continue to operate and meet its previously approved obligations until the operating budget is adopted each year, it means the city will continue to operate and meet its current financial obligations. This requires a healthy cash reserve to be held by the city. The operating budget and capital budget can be approved separately. The property tax bylaw cannot be passed until both budgets are approved. The city of Wayburn, through its administrative bylaw, as referenced previously, has designated the city manager to be responsible for preparation and submission of budget estimates for the operating and capital budgets annually or as required by council, for monitoring and controlling civic spending within the program budgets established by council, advising council and making recommendations concerning the financial condition of the city. City staff can only spend money on projects and within departments on programs that have been authorized by council. This is why it is so important to know exactly which capital expenditures, projects, and contracts will be undertaken as part of the budgeting process. Council must undertake budget amendments prior to any expenditure not included in the approved budget. Each project in the budget should be specifically identified. Generic placeholders should not be used. It should not just say "consultants" in the expenditures section for public works, but rather "consultants for" and then the specified project. Amendments to the budget should include how and where the new expenditure will be funded. A city's responsibility is defined within the Cities Act. The following list is not a complete list from the Act, only a list that I thought relevant to this discussion. The purpose of the Cities Act is to ensure that cities are accountable to the people who elect them and are responsible for encouraging and enabling public participation in the governance process. The purpose of a city is to foster economic, social, and environmental well-being, and to develop and maintain a safe and viable community, and a city is to act through its council unless provided otherwise in other provincial legislation. When the Cities Act refers to council, it means all the councillors and the mayor together. Excuse me. To ensure that there is not a free-for-all, the Cities Act further defines what the responsibilities and duties of councillors and the mayor are. Again, this is not a complete list, but those which I believe are relevant to the issue at hand. Section 65 of the Cities Act lists the general duties of councillors. At the top of the list is, A, to represent the public and consider the well-being and interests of the city. This is followed by, B, to participate in developing and evaluating the policies, services, and programs of the city, and F, to maintain the financial integrity of the city. The mayor has all the duties of a councillor and a few others, such as presiding at meetings and being a member of all council committees and bodies established by council. Mayors have no real additional power other than any other councillor. They can only speak for council with a resolution of council. City council is therefore ultimately responsible to the citizens for the budget and the performance of the city and its staff. With this basic understanding of the requirements and responsibilities for a budget, I will move on to the public information and education meeting. Although many would say 30 people coming out to a public meeting on something as important as the city budget is not a good showing, I disagree. The meeting was organized and held within a very short time. The room at the library was reserved on November 29, and the meeting held on December 6, just six days later. Leaving only five days for preparation of materials and advertising of the meeting. Our expectation is that with a longer lead time, attendance would have been significantly higher. As noted in our information submitted to council, which was necessary to be allowed to speak, information presented was not opinion, but rather city-prepared documents, along with documents that had been prepared based on this information obtained from the city of Wayburn, other Saskatchewan City Public Accounts, Stats Canada, and the provincial and federal government websites. The general consensus from the public meeting was the tax increase as proposed is way too high. The city should look for savings internally before increasing taxes. Only one person at the meeting was rude and disrespectful. It is also noted that this person would not sign the attendance sheet, and therefore could not be officially recorded as an attendee. What I found most disconcerting throughout the process of trying to get residents of Wayburn to engage in the budget process were the recurring themes that it didn't matter because the city won't listen, and the fear that submission of written comments may result in some form of persecution or retribution. Respectful and fair treatment of people within the city of Wayburn by the people of Wayburn starts with city hall. City council and staff set the tone of our community as perceived by others. The dismissive nature of the city's comments towards a citizen-based initiative to bring greater community engagement and understanding in and of city operations was, to me, astounding. We would have gladly partnered with the city on the initiative had they reached out. It came to my attention that I was not the only one in this community that was not getting responses from council on my staff questions. There was other people that attended our open house expressed the same sentiment. All questions asked by all residents of the city deserve timely and respectful responses. Stating that the public input period was over and there was no ability to hear any more public input was false. There is not a law stopping any resident from engaging with and providing feedback to council or city staff on any issue at any time, as long as it is done within the existing laws of reasonable conduct. I do give kudos to the three councillors that did come out to the public meeting. That was greatly appreciated by everybody. The delegation process allows input the night of the council meeting. It would have been good to get this information out to the public rather than withholding it and saying the public input process was over. Through this process, I have learned a number of things. I have learned that people are frustrated. One person who's lived here and worked here all their life is looking at moving, partly because of how they feel the city is being run. One person who was born here, moved away, then moved back, is now thinking moving back may have been a mistake because of the way the city currently is. One person who moved here a few years ago can't wait to move away from here as soon as their situation allows. I also learned that citizens of Saskatchewan are entitled by provincial law to get a copy of any collective agreement. All collective agreements must be filed with the ministerial labor. Strangely, the one I was looking for hadn't been filed by city staff since 2008, when I inquired. And you think collective agreements are generally on a three-year basis? That's a number of misses. I do thank the gentleman who came to our public meeting and provided me with that information. That was great knowledge. In our search for community accountability and transparency, I learned that a few years ago, a town in southwest Saskatchewan asked for a forensic audit of the town's operation and budget. I did not learn the outcome of this initiative. I suspect nothing, because it is not listed on the provincial website for ministerial inquiries into municipalities. There's two municipalities listed. I learned that the citizens within the city of Prince Albert are undertaking an initiative to get a forensic audit of the city of Prince Albert. This tells me that as citizens of Wayburn, we are not alone in wanting to be re-engaged and to be able to hold our council and city staff accountable. I will finish my presentation by acknowledging that the majority of written comments, including the original 88, received from citizens of Wayburn, were against any increase or wanted a substantially smaller increase, and I will ask city council to submit to the residents of Wayburn any revised increase for public input prior to approval of the budget. I'll also note that the Sparks Center currently costs over $1.8 million on the operating budget annually. This includes in approximate numbers, loan payments of $1.2 million, and over $410,000 in wages and benefits, and $250,000 in general operating costs per year, significantly more than the...
Do you have to let you know about Mr. Abrams? 15 minutes is pretty much...
Yeah, I've got like 20 words. Significantly more than the 990,000 proposed budget shortfall that is driving the proposed tax increase. Without the Sparks Center, the tax increase would not be required, and the city's cash position would be significantly better. And thank you. I apologize for the coughing. Otherwise, I would have had an extra two minutes to read you some questions, but I will email those into you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Abrams. Does council have any questions? All right. Again, thank you very much for your presentation. And I'll move forward to... There are no reports on standing committees. We'll move to the consent agenda, cash activity report October 31, public works report for November, water treatment plant, and fire department report for November. I'll take a motion for them.
Your worship, I'd like to make the motion that the items on the consent agenda be accepted as presented.
Thank you, Councillor Morissette. Seconder?
I can second that, your worship.
Thank you, Councillor Richards. All those in favor? Passed unanimously. Thank you. We'll now move to accounts payable. I'll take a motion for the accounts payable.
Thanks, your worship. Make a motion that purchases in the amount of $1,320,114.02 from November 25 to December 8 to be passed for payment.
Thank you, Councillor Richards.
I'll second that, your worship.
Thank you, Councillor Morissette. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. 2023 council meeting dates. City Clerk Richter, please.
Thanks, your worship. So in the past, council usually takes a look at the last meeting of the year to the next year to plan for council meetings. Normally, council meetings are always held the second and fourth Monday of the month. However, if there is a statutory holiday that falls on the Monday, then we move to the Tuesday, so sometimes there's the odd date that changes. And next year, those dates that will be affected is the Easter weekend, so the Monday, the city offices are closed, the first meeting of May, which falls on Victoria Day, and the first meeting of October, which will fall on Thanksgiving Day. There is also, in December, the second meeting would fall on Christmas Day in 2023. So I just have a few recommendations for 2023 on date changes. Also, if council wishes, in the past, we have usually only held one meeting in July and one meeting in August. If council is interested in doing that, I would suggest maybe we would cancel the July 10th and July 24th meeting and only hold one on July 17, and then just cancel the August 28 council meeting and just hold the first one on August 14. That's just kind of to even out the weeks between each meeting. And yeah, other than that, just with the statutory dates. So if council wishes to do that, then I would ask that you would make a motion tonight.
Your worship, I'll make the motion that council accept the recommendation to set the 2023 council regular meeting calendar with the following amendments to the regular schedule as per the council procedures bylaw 2018-3390. We will cancel the July 10th and 24th council meetings and reschedule one July meeting to July 17. Cancel the August 28 council meeting and hold one meeting for the month on August 14, and cancel the second meeting of December, which would be on December 25.
Thank you, Councillor Morissette. I have a seconder?
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Councillor Jenke? All right. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. Municipal revenue sharing. City Manager Warren, please.
Thank you, your worship. So the government of Saskatchewan provides funding to each municipality to support delivery of community services through the municipal revenue sharing program. The annual program gives municipalities an amount based on three quarters of one point of the provincial sales tax revenue collected from two years earlier. So the city received for the 2022 and 23 time period $1.99 million towards municipal revenue sharing. So all Saskatchewan municipalities are eligible to receive the revenue sharing from the government. To receive the grant, municipalities are required to submit the following: submission of audited annual financial statement to the ministry, submission of public reporting on municipal waterworks to the ministry, ensure education taxes are in good standing with respect to EPT reporting and remittance, adoption of council procedures bylaw, adoption of employee code of conduct, and filing and annually updating public disclosure statements for all members of council as required. All municipalities are required to complete the declaration and submit it back to the Ministry of Government Relations by January 31. Completed declaration requires a resolution from council confirming that municipality meets all requirements that are listed above. So my recommendation tonight is that city council provide the province with the required resolution confirming that the city of Wayburn meets all eligibility requirements for municipal revenue sharing program.
You have a motion for that?
Your worship, I would move that the city of Wayburn council confirms the city of Wayburn meets the following eligibility requirements to receive the municipal revenue sharing grant: submission of the 2021 audited financial statement to the Ministry of Government Relations, submission of the public reporting on municipal waterworks to the Ministry of Government Relations, in good standing with respect to the reporting and remittance of education property taxes, adoption of a council procedures bylaw, adoption of an employee code of conduct, and all members of council have filed and annually updated their public disclosure statements as required. And the council authorized the city manager to sign the declaration of eligibility and submit it to the Ministry of Government Relations.
Your worship, I will second that motion.
Thank you, Councillor Jenke. Do you have any questions? All those in favor? Carried unanimously. And I'd just like to add that we thank our provincial partners for the money that they do send to us. It's very much appreciated. Board of Revisions and Board of Revision Secretary Appointments Development Officer Fletcher, please.
Thank you, worship. So the city of Wayburn appoints a third-party Board of Revision and Development Appeals Board each year. The Board of Revision is so that people can appeal their SAMA assessment property values, and the Development Appeals Board is to handle appeals under the Planning and Development Act. So we, for 2022, contracted Western Municipal Consulting, and we are looking to continue with them. So what we need tonight is resolution for both the Board of Revision and for the Development Appeals Board to have Western Municipal Consulting continue to provide those services in 2023.
Thank you, Ms. Fletcher. Take a motion.
Thanks, your worship. I would make a motion that the city of Wayburn appoints Western Municipal Consulting Limited to manage the development appeals board process for the term of January 1, 2023 to December 31, 2023. Remuneration is set out in the Western Consulting Limited fee schedule with the members as provided for the Development Appeals Board. Further to that, that the city of Wayburn appoints Claudette McGuire with Western Municipal Consulting as secretary to the Development Appeals Board for the term of January 1, 2023 to December 31, 2023. Remuneration is set out in Western Municipal Consulting Limited's fee schedule. If Claudette McGuire is unable to perform secretarial functions for the reasons which may include staffing difficulties, a secretary may appoint a delegate to perform administrative functions and may appoint a recording secretary for the purposes of any hearing.
Thank you, Councillor Richards. I have a seconder?
I'll second that, your worship.
Thank you, Councillor Corrigan. Do you have any questions? Councillor Richards?
Thanks, your worship. Janine, just, it's been a year now. Happy with the service to this point? Any concerns, or, I guess, much action on that file even?
Yeah, we've received, I think, six appeals this year, so it's on par with previous years, maybe up a little bit. Overall, the service has been pretty good. We've had some staffing changeovers, so now, since those have happened, we've been getting pretty good service, so I have no complaints.
Good. Thanks.
Any further questions? All those in favor? Passed unanimously. Thank you. Move forward to introduction of bylaws.
Actually, your worship, we should have also do the Board of Revision, because we had to split the two resolutions, so there's also a Board of Revision one.
Janine again, then?
Same thing.
Okay, so...
Thank you, Donette. Your worship, I'd like to move that the city of Wayburn appoints Western Municipal Consulting Limited to manage the Board of Revision process for the term of January 1, 2023 to December 31, 2023. Remuneration set out in Western Municipal Consulting Limited's fee schedule with the members as provided for the Board of Revision. The chair shall be responsible for naming no fewer than three members for the hearing of any matter, where the chair does not include themselves among the appointees. The members appointed for a full hearing determine the chair of the hearing among the members. Further, the city of Wayburn appoints Leanna Steppen with Western Municipal Consulting Limited as secretary for the Board of Revision for the term of January 1 to December 31. Remuneration set out as per Western Municipal Consulting's fee schedule. If Miss Steppen is unable to perform the secretarial functions for reasons which may include scheduling difficulties, a secretary may appoint a delegate to perform administrative functions and may appoint a recorded secretary for the purposes of any hearing. functions and may appoint a recorded secretary for the purposes of any hearing.
Thank you. I'll take a secondor?
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counsel Morissette. Are there any questions?
Not a question, Your Worship. I would just like to thank city clerk or Janine or whoever it was who was so thorough in writing this up for me.
Thank you. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. We'll move forward to introduction of bylaws. Bylaw 2022-3453, Official Community Plan Bylaw Amendment to Redesignate the Property at 275 Fifth Avenue North, which is intended for the future Waburn General Hospital, to community service. Ms. Fletcher?
Thank you, Worship. So zoning bylaw amendment application and corresponding official community plan amendment application were submitted by Crosby, Hannah, and Associates on behalf of SHA. It pertains to 275 Fifth Avenue North, which is proposed parcel H on the plan of subdivision. It's intended for the future Waburn General Hospital. The request is to redesignate the property in the official community plan from the existing future residential designation to community service and that the property be rezoned from urban holding to health service zone. These changes are requested to facilitate the development of the new hospital. It's currently under a subdivision application and it's portions of two existing blocks. They're city-owned property currently, and they were previously leased out as hayland. There's residential development to both the east and west of the proposed parcel. Council gave first reading to both bylaws on November 14th at the regular council meeting. So after first reading, public notices went out in accordance with the city's public notice policy. They were advertised on November 23rd and 30th, additions of the Waburn Review, posted at City Hall and on the city website. Additionally, neighborhood notices were mailed to all property owners within a 75-meter radius of the property. Notices also provided to the Waburn District Planning Commission to give them the opportunity to comment on the applications. Responses received are discussed later in the report. So SHA is looking to build the new Waburn General Hospital on parcel H. It will replace the existing hospital at 201 First Avenue North. The OCP and zoning amendment are required to facilitate the development of a hospital on the subject property as it's currently zoned urban holding, which would not allow for a hospital. The property is currently a future residential land use designation in the official community plan. They're requesting that the lands be designated community services. The community service designation was not previously included in the OCP. However, in consultation with staff and the consultants, it was determined that the new zone and land use designation would be best to be able to accommodate the new hospital. Previously, hospitals were only allowed in the R3 zone as discretionary use. The purpose of the designation is to allow for areas that allow for a variety of major community service uses, such as hospitals, high schools, post-secondary institutions, and other similar uses. The land use designation enables the zoning bylaw to have zones that would accommodate these uses that are compatible with residential areas but may not fit within the traditional residential zoning. For example, they may need larger lots, higher maximum heights, accessory uses, et cetera. The subject property has been identified as an area for future development of residential. Given that there are sufficient areas already designated for residential that have not been developed, the transition to the community service designation is appropriate. The OCP amendment will also designate remaining parcels of the land in the subdivision as parks, open space, and recreation. This will include the portion along Fifth Avenue that is currently part of the Tadagua Trail, the buffer strip between Fieldstone Estates and parcel H, and the municipal reserve and municipal utility parcels. So the proposal is consistent with the statements of provincial interest. The redesignation supports enhancing physical and mental health and well-being of Saskatchewan people pursuant to 6.15 of the SPIs. The proposal contributes to complete community by providing essential services within residential neighborhoods. So the property is currently zoned UH Urban Holding. It allows for very limited development and is intended to protect lands from premature development and the orderly transition from agricultural lands to urban development. The applicant has requested that the land be rezoned to a new health service district zone, which would allow for a hospital as a permitted use, as well as clinics and laboratories and other uses consistent with health services. This zone was proposed to be added to the zoning bylaw as the current R3 zone is the only zone that allows for a hospital. However, some of the regulations would have to be amended for the new hospital, and the zone would allow for some accessory uses and related uses to a hospital for greater flexibility in the future. The zoning amendment will also include remaining parcels of the land in the subdivision as parks and open space, along with that OCP amendment. So I've included a map of which parcels will be designated what? Anything in green will be parks and open space. The red parcel will be the hospital. The zoning amendment also includes amendments to other sections of the zoning bylaw to add regulations for the health service zone, such as signs, fences, and the definitions. So the changes since first reading, changes have been made to both bylaws to include the remainder of the lands that will be city-owned. And to clarify that the area along Fifth Avenue North buffer for the multi-use path is designated parks and open space. And there was changes to the wording for fences to limit the height to protect residential neighboring properties. Originally, it had been included as unlimited. We've included a height limit of 3.66 meters in any side or rear yard and no more than 1.5 meters in any front yard, except for the sightline triangle. Waburn District Planning Commission discussed the proposed bylaw amendments at their November 25th meeting and had no concerns with the proposed bylaws. The letter has been attached to that. Staff received one response to the public notices that were sent out. The letter was provided by several property owners from Fieldstone Estates, which is located west of the proposed development. The letter has been attached to the report. It included several concerns about the bylaw amendments and development overall. They expressed concerns about not being part of discussions for the design of the site, including site layout, signs, fences, and hedges, et cetera. While staff understand this concern from their residents about the lack of consultation with surrounding residents, the process that has been followed to date is due to SHA and SASC builds and procurements processes for procurement on the project. The city staff have shared as much information as possible with the public without compromising that procurement process. The letter also indicates concerns about impacts on the walking/bicycle path on Fifth Avenue North, safety in nearby school zones and residential areas, noise levels, lift station capacity used from homes and backyards, and their ability to enjoy where they live once the new hospital and associated development are built. Prior to the subdivision application, staff required SHA to conduct a traffic impact study, which did not identify any areas of concern with the new hospital and additional traffic in the area. The traffic impact study did not indicate any traffic improvements would be required to maintain adequate levels of service. Staff note that SHA have done studies on the capacity of the lift station and have identified improvements to enhance capacity and create redundancy to service the hospital. Those improvements will be undertaken by the developer at their cost, and the upgrades should result in overall improvements to the service of that lift station. Off-site development levies have also been collected at the subdivision stage, which can be used for capital projects and improvements in the future. In terms of noise, views, and ability to enjoy their properties, the city has required a 30-meter buffer to be provided through the plan of subdivision that is intended to mitigate some of these concerns. The city's Parks Department can look at planting trees and vegetation along that buffer strip in the future to help screen the hospital and heliport from view to the west of the property. City administration will also work with SHA to mitigate concerns about noise and views through the site plan and development permit process. Additionally, city council will receive more information around the helipad in coming months as the municipality will be asked for a letter of non-opposition for the Transport Canada requirements. So official community plan amendments must be approved by the Minister of Government Relations. So upon final reading, it will be submitted to the province for ministerial approval, and both bylaws will take effect upon that approval. So council has two options tonight. The one would be to hold a public hearing regarding the bylaws, to hear any comments or concerns from interested parties. Council can then give second and third reading to the bylaws. I won't list all that out. And then council directs administration to submit both bylaws to the Minister of Government Relations for approval. Or option number two would be that council refused to give second and third reading to the bylaws and direct administration to make amendments and/or advise the applicant of the refusal. The reasons for refusal would have to be provided. So the staff recommendation tonight would be option number one: that council holds the public hearing and gives second and third reading to both bylaws to amend the official community plan and zoning bylaw as mentioned.
Thank you, Ms. Fletcher. So tonight, we will open a public hearing for bylaw 2022-3453, and I declare it open and invite any parties wishing to speak in regards to this bylaw to step up to the podium at this time. Also note that we did have two written submissions, I think, which Janine mentioned, that were received in regards to this hearing. Anybody have anything to say or come up to speak? Otherwise, I will take a motion for, or I will close this, declare the public hearing closed, and I will take a motion for the second reading.
Your Worship, I'll make the motion that the bylaw 2022-3453, being a bylaw to amend the official community plan to designate the property at 275 Fifth Avenue North, proposed parcel H, as community services on future land use and land use designation map be read a second time.
Thank you, Counsel Morissette. Secondor?
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counsel Corrigan. Do I have any questions? Counsel Richards?
Thanks, Your Worship. Planning and Development Officer Fletcher, that was an awful lot of reading you had to do, so I appreciate that, and I appreciate your work. I know this is an unusual situation, simply because SHA is sort of, is sort of driving the ship, if I could use that analogy, but I appreciate that some of the residents now are getting their voices heard. So whatever we can do to engage those folks, like you said, there are options around the green space, the buffer zone in between, so I appreciate that, and I just wanted to acknowledge that it is one step closer. So this is all very positive. Thanks, Your Worship.
Thank you. Any further questions? All those in favor? Carried unanimously.
Your Worship, I'll make the motion that bylaw 2022-3453, being a bylaw to amend the official community plan to designate the property at 275 Fifth Avenue North, proposed parcel H, as community services on future land use and land use designation map be read a third time and passed.
Thank you, Counsel Morissette.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counsel Corrigan. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. We will now move to bylaw 2022-3454, zoning bylaw amendment, Hospital. Ms. Fletcher?
That was my report.
That was everything? I think we have to.
Your Worship, I'll motion that bylaw 2022-3454, being a bylaw to amend the zoning bylaw for the purpose of rezoning the property at 275 Fifth Avenue North, proposed parcel H, from urban holdings to parks, open space, and recreation zone to health services zone and other associated be read a second time.
Thank you, Counsel Richards.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counsel Morissette. Have any further questions? All in favor? Oh, sorry.
Go ahead. You know what? You can go ahead and vote on that, but after, before you do third reading, we should do a public hearing on this bylaw as well?
Or should we backtrack?
Well, we can vote.
If you'd like to do the public hearing now, you can before you vote on it.
We'll backtrack and we'll do the public hearing. Sorry. I apologize.
Sorry about that.
So I open a public hearing for bylaw 2022-3454, zoning bylaw amendment to property 275 Fifth Street Avenue North, from urban holdings to health service zone to facilitate the development of the new Waburn General Hospital. Is there anybody in the audience which is to speak to this? Again, we did have some letter, two written submissions in regards to this that were addressed. Anybody from the council? All right. I will close the public hearing then, and we will move forward with the motion. If I could have it read one more time, please.
You bet. Sorry about that. A motion that bylaw 2022-3454, being a bylaw to amend the zoning bylaw for the purpose of rezoning the property at 275 Fifth Avenue North, proposed parcel H, from urban holdings to parks, open space, and recreation zone to health services zone and other associated be read a second time.
Thank you once again.
I will second that, Your Worship.
And again, thank you very much. Any questions? All those in favor? Carried unanimously.
Your Worship, I'd motion that bylaw 2022-3454, being a bylaw to amend the zoning bylaw for the purpose of rezoning the property at 275 Fifth Avenue North, proposed parcel H, from urban holdings and parks, open space, and recreation zone to health services zone and associated be read a third time and passed.
I'll second that as well, Your Worship.
Thank you. All those in favor? Passed unanimously. And I'd like to add also, Ms. Fletcher, to thank you for all the in-depth work you did and the very thorough explanation that you gave for everybody so that we can fully understand what's going on. There is no unfinished business. We will move on to new business, home business application. Ms. Fletcher?
This is my last one, I think. Thank you, Worship. So an application has been received from James Dionne to operate a personal service business, which would be massage therapy and reflexology out of their residence at 1003 Bison Avenue. It's located in the R2 zone. The business will operate Tuesday to Sunday, 9:00 a.m. to 8:30 p.m. This would be considered a controversial use as it involves clients being directed to the home throughout the day. The client and the applicant anticipates a minimal traffic increase with one client attending the home at a time and approximately three to five clients per day. Parking is available on a driveway. The zoning bylaw requires controversial home-based businesses to go through the neighborhood notice process and receive council approval. Neighborhood notices were mailed out on November 18th to all neighbors within 50 meters of the applicant's home. Residents receiving the notice were given the opportunity to comment on the application. No concerns or objections were received. Home-based businesses have to meet the following provisions generally: be incidental to the use of the premises of residents, be compatible with the residential uses, be limited in extent in terms of volume of materials sold and number of clients, not substantially increase the volume of traffic, and not detract from residential character of the zone. Staff have reviewed the application and are of the opinion that the home-based business application meets the requirements of the zoning bylaw. So option number one, council approves the home-based business permit 2022.014 at 1003 Bison Avenue, subject to the conditions. No person other than a resident of the dwelling unit shall be engaged in the home-based business as an employee or volunteer. No advertisement carrying the address of the dwelling in which the home-based business occurs may be placed in any media. Home-based business shall not occupy more than 25% of the gross floor area. The face of any home-based business sign on site must not exceed 0.092 square meters and must be placed within the inside half of the front yard setback. Permit is only valid for that address and is not transferable to another address. Reapplication will be required if the business moves locations. Home-based businesses are subject to periodic review to ensure compliance. The applicant's driveway shall be used for off-street parking, and a city Waburn business license shall be obtained prior to operation. Option number two would be refusal of the home-based business permit, and the reasons for refusal would have to be provided tonight. So staff recommendation would be option number one, to approve the home-based business permit.
Thank you. I'll take a motion.
Your Worship, I would move that the home-based permit 2022.014, to allow for a personal service business at 1003 Bison Avenue, Lot 1 through 6, Block A, Plan FK4662, be approved, subject to the conditions as recommended.
Thank you, Counsel Corrigan.
Your Worship, I will second that motion.
Thank you, Counsel Jenke. Do you have any questions in regards to? All those in favor? Carry unanimously. We will now move forward to the 2023 city of Waburn budget. We will now move forward to the 2023 City of Waverne budget, and I would just like to add that we have here tonight Ron McCormick, who is the board chair of the Waverne Police Commission, and he will present, when the time comes, he will present the police board budget. Thank you, City Manager.
Yeah, thanks, your worship. So every year, city councils, the city manager, and our city departments work together to develop an annual budget, to allocate resources in a manner that best meets the objectives that have the highest priority and will produce the greatest positive impact on the community. So on October 24th, we presented our prelim budget to both council and to the public of 10.34. During the development of the budget, city council provide an open budget approach to offer citizens an opportunity to provide input on priorities and influence the allocation of public resources and learn more about the budget process. So from October 25th to November 18th, for reporting purposes, we allowed the input from the public, and we had 88 respondents that provided information back to, back to the council, which assists us in this process, and then that was presented to council on November 28th. For the budget, the budget is always a balancing act between meeting the increasing demands of a growing community while improving service levels. Our continued focus is making Waverne a safe, convenient, and livable community, providing quality services, including our recreation services, garbage collections, park maintenance, snow removal, emergency services, and our general governmental services. So what I'll do now is I'll actually pass it on to our Director of Finance, Laura Musall, and she'll provide an update on where we are at right now for budget.
Thank you.
Good evening. So as City Manager Warren said, our budget approach is to balance the City of Waverne rate payer's interest with the continued growth and prosperity, to provide a budget that enables growth and balances the department's requests, to continue to provide, provide a high level of service and programs, to take into consideration the infrastructure gap, and set out short and long-term plans addressing the maintenance and replacement of major capital, to manage budgetary challenges with the increase in supply and capital costs, to maintain tax policies that keep Waverne competitive with other Saskatchewan cities. The general operations of the city are funded through grants and tax revenue, and the utility functions of the city are funded by user fees that are collected through utility billing, landfill fees, et cetera, and capital grants. So we went and, or I went and compared to some other cities. This information was provided by the government of Saskatchewan on their website. The latest data that's provided is 2021. So the taxation data, what they have provided is the total taxable assessment, the census that they were using in 2021 was from 2016, the total municipal tax levy that is collected by that municipality, and then we calculated out what the tax levy per capita is. So if you take the total and municipal assessment, obviously this includes like commercial, it includes everything, so it would be commercial and everything, same with the tax levy, but if you take it on a per capita basis, Waverne sits at $880 per capita. So for 2021, residential municipal tax comparisons, when you take the residential total assessment, that's in Waverne, the residential municipal taxation we collect in 2021, just under 4.9 million in 2021, with our mail rate and including our, or this municipal taxation includes our base tax. The taxable assessment on a property for 250,000 is, what we would have collected is 1,665,000. So this is a comparison to what other cities with that same 250 taxable assessment would have collected. So then also with, if you take the same analogy using commercial, it's, some of the cities have different bases for their commercial or different rates. So we took the one that is most common within that city and calculated out if they had a $500,000 taxable assessment, so in comparison with Waverne, it would cost $7,500, and these are the other cities within Saskatchewan. So an update to, so after all of what we received from feedback, we went back to the departments, asked them to take a look at what we, they've had proposed for increases or what their expenditures would be. So originally, it equaled 991,988 in revenue. So after input, we've, the departments went through and found some efficiencies. So administration looked at increasing the transfer from reserve for tax agreements to 100,000, or up by 100,000, so back to what it was in 2021, or sorry, 2022, because we were going to try to cut back what we were bringing back. We actually had to increase our expenditure for housing funding, because we got an estimate from the Housing Authority indicating that the expense that we would have to pay for 2023 was 23,000, more than what we had budgeted, because we're seeing an increase in that. The fire department has kept out their rapid response truck, so a payment of 32,000. Leisure, they looked back at a cost of the facility's glass on the Spark Center and updated the cost to decrease it by 50,000, and also cut back on some of the wages to decrease that by 35,000. Parks really didn't see much that they could cut, so it was just 550,000, just cutting back on a few expenditures, nothing major engineering. They removed the plotter that they were wanting to purchase by 20,000. Public Works, they removed their message boards that they wanted to purchase, and they also reduced what they were anticipating their SaaS power costs. And police also made some cuts, so I'll turn that over to Mr. McCormick to discuss what their cuts were.
All right. Mr. McCormick, can you go through the police portion of the budget, please?
Yeah, we, sorry. We certainly cut in, in major ways to, wages and benefits, we cut professional and contractual service, we're, we're also cut utilities, we're cut maintenance materials and supplies. We cut down, cut back about 15,000. Most of our, most of our cuts were around wages and benefits. Internal transfers for capital, again, went down about $100,000. The decrease was around 40.2% reduction in services, and that again brought us down to about $345,000.
All right. Yes, thank you, and I think also, as a member of the board, I think we cut some of the facilities projects and a few other members, our items, and so anyways, I thank you for that report.
Okay. So with all the cuts that were made, we got it down to a tax increase of 469,186, which calculates out to an increase to, of our overall tax base of 4.9%. The tax revenue from mail rates would be from the general operations would be 460, or sorry, $84,685. The tax revenue from, for emergency services would be 152,676, and the base tax from emergency services and the snow removal would be 231,825. So this results in a calculation of $55 increase in the tax base. Sorry, base tax, I should say. So when you calculate that out on a 250 taxable assessment, this is not taking into account the provincial mail rate, any increase that they may have, it's keeping at the same rate. The municipal tax change would be $24, base tax 55, so $79 on the municipal tax, and that, that actually calculates out because of the lower taxable assessment to 4.35%. And that would be about $6.61 per month. So I've gone through and I've updated what, like how our taxes are funded. This is just updated numbers based on what we had in the preliminary. So the, the city Waverne is funded through property taxes, 12.258 million. Grant funding, 4.3, reserve funding, 2.1, fees and charges, 1.8, investment income and other of 630,000, so 21.19 million. Our utility funds are budgeted to bring in fees and charges of 5.8 million, reserve funding of 11,000, and grant funding of 100,000, so 5.9. And our utility and operating capital will be a transfer from reserve of 500,000, and then reserve funding for these capital projects and internal loans of 2.7, so 3.268 million. So that's a total of 30 million, 30.379 million. So as you can see, majority of our funding does come from property taxes. So here's a breakdown of where our funding goes. So leisure services does take a majority of our funding at 27.9%. This is the operating funding only, this doesn't include any utilities. So our operating of 21.7 million, this is what's included. So our net operating budget of 21.7 million. In our expenditures, we have conditional grants to come in, unconditional grants, fee revenue, the interest and reserve funding, and internal loan funding, and that gets us back to our 12.258 that we collect through taxes. So also note that our tax revenue includes also grant and lose from the government, so it's like grant and lose in taxes. And then we have a breakdown of what's included in our facilities, fleet, and local improvements. So these funds are all funded through transfers from our operating. So when we have our audited financial statements, it's all consolidated together. So our operating funds, these, the facilities, fleet, and our local improvements, 3.1 million, and we have a capital budget of 385,000. That is our fleet purchases this year. Our utility and landfill, so these are all, as I said before, these are all funded through utility and landfill fees and grants, it's not funded through taxation. So through utilities, landfill, we have 5 million coming in for operating, and capital 2.5 is what we are investing in our capital expenditures. So then, there's, I have a breakdown of all our revenue expenses. This is, it's the same as what was in the preliminary budget, just updated numbers, so I'm not going to go through each one of these specifically. I will highlight on what the capital is. So police still has their new fleet of 100,000, fire has some equipment that they're looking to purchase for 63,000, the leisure center has, still has their ice plant as budgeted, and the Tadagwa Trails pedestrian light for 20,000. So that gets our, our 383,000 in our general operating capital fund. And then in our fleet and facilities fund, our capital, we have four flag poles that we still have budgeted for, and the fleet that is budgeted to purchase of 325,000. And our utility capital fund, we have the water main replacements and the lift station refurbishment, rebuild, and lift station one upgrades of 2 million, the heat and ventilation at the water treatment plant of 250,000, and the landfill detailed design of the Phase One engineered cells, 200,000, and the litter fence of 45,000. So that gets us to our 2.5 million of capital. So I did actually update each department's departmental expenses to include what the transfers were instead of having them all together. So these transfers, they get consolidated out when we do our audited financials. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't be reported as revenue in the other fund, and we wouldn't report these as expense, because they all, the revenue and the expense would, they zero each other out, but, so. These are all, I guess, I won't go through each of these. Do you want me to? So that brings us down to, or gets us, shows what each department spends on for their expenditures. So just to like highlight, like transfer to utilities, so in Public Works, like they, Public Works has to pay the utilities for their, their use of like water and sewer. Transfer to facilities, it's paying for the facilities fund for the repairs and maintenance to the Public Works buildings. Transfers to fleet, it's paying the fleet fund to fund those fleet purchases, because those, the fleet and facilities and utilities are individually funded, so they have to have, they have to pay for their expenditures somehow, so the operating pays for those And I believe that is it. So at the end of the day, we ended up getting down to a 4.9% increase, a $55 increase on tax base. So the tax base would go from, I believe, 110, or 710 to, was it 765? I can't even remember now. Yes, 710 to 765.
Thanks, thank you, Laura, for, for all that, and appreciate all the detail that you tried to pass on to everybody, and I believe most of that information is on the website, is it not? So if people want.
So we will provide it. Yes, we will provide this as on our website tomorrow.
Right, so, yeah, thank you very much. Have any questions? Anybody for finance or city administration? Questions first, we'll go.
Just to get the process straight, your worship, do you want us to ask questions of administration first, and then some commentary later? How, how did the next limit go?
I mean, we can take a motion first, I guess.
Your worship, I am pleased to move the City of Waverne 2023 operating budget with a 4.90% increase be accepted as presented.
Thank you, Council Jenke.
I'll second that, your worship.
Thank you, Council Morissette. First of all, I'll go roundtable and take questions first, I guess, if you have any questions, yeah.
I have a couple for administration, and City Manager, I'll let you redirect as you see fit to folks, but I'll direct them all at you. There's not that many. Just some, no, there's not. Some questions that I've heard in the community over the last month or so, or year, for that matter. Could you briefly give us, and this showed up, I think, in some of the written comments from the public meeting as well, could you give us a brief description of how our airport is funded? So is it 100% funded by the taxpayer, or how does that work, if you could?
Thanks, thanks. I'll pass that question off to Jen, our Director of Engineering.
Yeah, so the airport revenue has a few different things. So we receive money for all the hangars that are located out there. So we have 10 private hangars, and we have what'll be four commercial hangars this year. So they pay lease rental, kind of for that space, and we did pass a bylaw that it will increase in 2023, so we receive around $26,000, based on what we have for hangars out there. We do also receive a grant for the RM, that the taxes that are paid to the RM, they actually put those taxes back to the airport, so we see, receive around $6,000 from the RM. And then we do, if we are doing projects at the airport, we apply for cap funding, which is an airport program through the provincial government. So we applied for that last year when we did our asphalt paving on the main runway and the main taxiways, we were able to get 50% of our costs covered for those specific projects. So it's, that's kind of how we fund the airport, as well as the difference is made up through taxation.
Okay. So the users do pay significantly to be out there and be part of it.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Can I just keep, you want to go around, or?
No, we'll forward.
Okay. City Manager, and I'll throw this one back to the chief, because I'd asked you both about this a couple meetings ago. We have some pretty big fees, I guess I will call them that, to WBM. It just says consulting, you know, 180 them that, to WBM, it just says consulting, you know, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars between the two departments, and I'd asked you to look into, is that the most efficient way to get that service, or first, I guess, what is all that service? So, and I don't know if, if you want to answer later as a group of questions from the police side, is that your plan, Your Worship? Or, I don't care, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, I think if, I don't know, if you would like to answer those questions, Chief, if it'd be easier than Ron, I guess.
I think Counsel, uh, do this, do.
Sure. Ron. I think Jamie, I think our chief, if you don't mind coming up to the microphone, and this will go through all the, if you have questions for the chief, we'll maybe go through those.
Do them all at once?
Yeah, thank you, yeah.
So I'll start with that, Chief Blunden, and then you can start with your questions after that. So first thing for WBM, so we've had WBM service for IT providing for us since 2014. We went from a period where we didn't have actually an internal IT employee, so at that time, council and administration made a decision to move for WBM. So they provide all IT services for all aspects of our operations. So right now, what we do is, is they look at everything from our servers to our software, they provide online support, in-person support for everything that we do within, within the city. So what we've dedicated part of our 2023 strategic plan is to look into provider review. Having them in place since 2014 has been beneficial for us, they've been really good with service to us, but it's always beneficial for us as administrative team to see what else is out there. We will not be looking at having an internal, it's actually more costly for us to have an internal provider, because we actually would have to have at least two employees providing that service for us, and there'll be a lot more than the cost would be for what we're currently paying towards WBM, but that's actually our plan moving forward.
Yeah, and I offer no commentary on the quality or anything, just want to make sure I have some clarity, probably this, sorry Laura.
I can add to that, too. So some of those fees, too, they're like, they're, what do you want to call it, like set fees, like we'd have to pay them whether we had WBM or not, because it's like, we have licensing fees that we pay through WBM to, like for like our Microsoft three sixty five, those kind of things. So whether we change providers or have it in-house, we would still have some of those fees.
Thank you, Chief Blunden.
Yeah, so I'll echo the same comments, I mean, reality is, is our day-to-day operations with our IT, so any issues that we have that come up on a daily basis, we reach out to WBM and they're able to accommodate us. I can tell you that this year coming, we don't have a very good cybersecurity two-phase authentication right now, so we're going through that phase rate with WBM to put that into place. When our members are out elsewhere and they're getting on the web, we need to be able to have that two-phase because we're prone to attacks, and we all know that in the most recent little while, cybercrime is on the rise quite a bit. So we are going through a two-phase authentication process with them. We're also informed that our backup server is now at its life-end capacity, we have to replace that. So, you know, we had forty eight thousand dollars budgeted in 2022, and we're moving up to fifty thousand. The backup server itself is about a twelve, thirteen thousand dollar touch to change out, and again, we don't know if there's anybody else out there that's available to us with respect to a cheaper sort of look for accommodating us, but we can certainly look into that, but I don't know if we're going to find one or not. I'll echo the same comments as the city manager, so.
Good, thank you, I just encourage you to work close on that, to try to keep that cost can get high. Chief, if you want to just, I'll kind of group, I'll rejig my comments so you can both answer at the same time, because some apply to both. One of the line items I see in both budgets is around training conferences slash meetings and conferences. I want to make sure, because we are in times of, I guess, I don't like to use the word austerity, but when we're trying to really be careful, are we being as efficient as we can? I know there are some increases in meetings and conferences, and I want to be sure that what we're doing is, we have to keep people trained, and I hundred percent get that, but are we being as efficient at our training and meetings and conferences as we can be, I guess, if I could say it that way?
Yeah, so I'll start with that again, Counsel Richards. Things have changed, and virtual training is more prevalent now. We have more and more of our employees not having those travels to our community to do their training, so we've actually seen an increase in virtual training, and we've actually been encouraging our employees to do that. Also, we've been trying to do more internal training. So we have a dedicated safety officer, and we have a dedicated HR manager, and we have a HR consultant on contract. And so what we've done is lots of dedicated training to our senior management, to our frontline workers, through safety and HR, that's internal, that we can do that way. The other thing we've also been looking at is more group training. So if we're going to go for a session on, say, a piece of equipment, instead of just saying one person, we're going to bring someone in to train the whole group, we're going to have internal training on that as well. The last thing that we try to do is try to use local. So we've done a little more training with the Southeast Regional College for some of our training, that's actually been dedicated through what Abby Cravill, our safety coordinator, has been doing, to provide that more and more. So for us, training is needed, and we are very thankful that council sees that for our employees, that's, that's really something that we need. We have a very young workforce as well, and to have those opportunities for them to, to attend a training session, and sometimes maybe not being able to even go there, but to do it from your office or do it as a group setting, it's been great for us that way. So in our budget, we're not seeing a large increase on training because of those reductions in costs that way, and also for means as well.
Thank you. Chief?
Yeah, I'll echo the same sort of comments, especially with police work and the nature of our profession, there's certain standards to be met annually, there's certain criteria that we have to have in place in regards to being able to meet the standards that are required under the provincial laws with respect to our commission. For example, there's an increase in the training budget for myself as well as the deputy chief, that's a contractual thing. The reality is, is we have a joint tactical support team that we put in place, but we don't have any incident commanders here in Waburn that are available to take over that and run the incident command structure. So we've added five thousand dollars to that, which brings it back up to what the contracts actually state it's supposed to be. So we've got that scheduled to, for Brent to take his incident command course in Ottawa to be regulated as an incident commander. It's less than, the budget's less than what we, actually, the course is going to be, so we'll have to find some money. Other than that, the money that we had in for training for the members, again, there's certain standards that they have to meet on a annual basis, firearms, for example, the taser itself, and on top of that, we've got two new officers that are in the drug unit that have to be brought up to speed with respect to the drug investigation course. We originally scheduled forty thousand, we wanted fifty thousand for the training, we dropped it down to thirty thousand. So even at thirty thousand, we're not going to meet the objectives that we had for this year, and that was decided at our last meeting, that we dropped ten thousand dollars off of that. So being efficient, I think we're efficient to the point where we've cut too much, but that, that's the price that you have to pay when there's a budget strain, right? So I think definitely within our area of being able to save some money somewhere, so.
Thanks, I encourage you to keep, both of you to keep that up. My last question for you, Chief, and I think I'm, the rest are for him, and I think I know the answer to this one, but I just, I want to hear it again. In your budget, there is a new cost, and I can tell you where it is, it's page, well, I don't know what, my page might be different than yours, but it's zero one, zero four, forty three oh five, and it's a new eight thousand dollar fee for RCMP forensic services, and that wasn't there before. And I think I know the answer, but I just want to, I don't want to hear it, but I need to hear it again, probably.
Yeah, so the new word of the day is cost recovery for the Malines. They don't want to pay for, or do anything without getting paid for it. So, for example, we have two drug cases right now before the courts that are trafficking in cocaine, and the only way we're going to get efficient on that is if we have a subject matter expert report completed. We don't have any subject matter experts available to write those reports, we have one individual, but he was involved in the case, so we have to contract that out. The RCMP would do it previously for about thirty five hundred dollars for each report, and I'm told by the crowns right now that they're not going to proceed with any trafficking offenses unless it's actually a subject matter expert report is put in. So we've scheduled extra money in there to be able to cover that off. Another part is forensic services, every single, I guess, piece of equipment that we seize, be it a cell phone, a laptop, a computer, for example, we just had a case where we had twelve different types of materials that we seized, between computers, laptops, cell phones, with respect to a child pornography case that was done. We've got to get each and every one of those analyzed, and that's a cost. Before, we used to be able to send it into the RCMP, now we send it in, and there's a cost to it. So that's what the, the cost is at. We've already more than likely have about three thousand of that spent, knowing that we have to put something to play, and that'll be done in the first month of January, so that's where that's coming from. Cost recovery, the new word of the day for the RCMP, so.
It's unfortunate, but the reality, right?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, Chief. Still good?
You bet.
You going to give me the hook? Thank you. Matthew, city manager, sorry, there has been some conversations around the flag poles. I support this, I, I want us to have the four flag poles, but can you help us understand, and maybe this is a question for the director over here, why we need to replace the three we have to get to four?
Yeah, okay, so first of all, the three that we have are not functioning correctly, we actually are no longer able to bring the flags up and down, they've just been damaged beyond repair. They're also leaning and in a tough place, so the current plan is to remove those three flag poles and replace them in Memorial Park with some new poles, which will allow us to, once again, hold flag raising events for different community groups while still keeping our flag up as well. So we are increasing a pole as well, so that we no longer have to take our flag down when celebrating those different events.
That's very good, thank you for that. I want to be quicker here than I probably thought it was going to be. One last question, and then I'll let it go. I see local improvements are up from seven hundred thousand to eight hundred thousand, so it's a hundred thousand dollar increase. What I, what I really want to know is how much of that is going into our streets, because that message was, was loud and clear in this public consultation process. So it looks like the Director of Engineering is going to field that for you.
We'll consider that as well.
So I'll tell you right away, the extra hundred thousand is actually a carryover from this year, so we have a hundred thousand dollars budgeted to do for Street South at River Park entrance. We had to go and replace all the stormlines underneath, and when we did that, we didn't get that done in time, but also we didn't want to pave and shut down the River Park entrance for camping and stuff for a long period of time. So we actually did all the stormlines, once the park closed this year, we did all the stormlines and stuff, and carried over the additional hundred thousand dollars to pave it next year. So that's why you're seeing eight hundred thousand versus the seven hundred thousand. So for the repaving, local improvements for coming in 2023, so I've talked about that hundred thousand dollar carryover. We also have budgeted to pave Fifth Street from Cotto to Prairie. We are going to do Railway Avenue, Six to Eight Street, and we are looking at doing Brownley Street from Sims to First Avenue. So we have, I'm just double checking, because we also have sidewalks in here as well, did you want to talk about sidewalks, or?
No, just curious about the streets.
Okay, so that is the majority of the budget, and then we do have some sidewalk replacements as well in there, but we are focusing a lot on the repaving of areas that, like Fifth Street has become a higher traffic area. We know Railway is used significantly, with Railway, we need to do a few underground things, but our plan is to kind of work on Railway in kind of two, three block pieces over the next few years to get that one up to par, so.
Thank you. Thanks, Your Worship.
You're welcome, thank you for those questions, I probably clarified a few things. Counsel Morissette?
Thank you, actually, Counsel Richards kind of jogged my memory, and I didn't want to leave the Director of Leisure Services too unscathed, so I apologize for not giving you too much heads up on this one. But I do sit on the Leisure Services Committee, and I know one thing that came up in a lot of the comments was the library, I know we invest about three hundred thousand dollars in that each year, Crescent Point, the Sparks Center, those provide services to the community, but can you expand on what the costs are to run those?
Okay, so I'll start off with the library for an example, so we provide the region with an operating grant of around three hundred and ninety seven thousand dollars for 2023, so that goes to the region to pay our per capita levy to operate that. We also provide the, the facility to the local library to operate, so we spend about seventy five thousand dollars in costs for that facility as well. And then we also give them the twenty thousand dollar operating grant as well. So those are some costs that go into the library. As far as the other facilities, was there anything like specific you were?
I guess it's more just the cost recovery, because I know the prices to use those are still fairly low.
Right, yeah, so we follow a fifty percent cost recovery mandate whereby we try to earn fifty percent of our, our expenses through user fees, leaving the remaining fifty percent to operate those facilities through taxation. So typically, our arena brings in a little bit higher cost recovery, but it'll balance out the swimming pool, which will bring in a lower cost recovery. So our overall mandate is to balance that out as good as we can.
Thank you very much.
All right, before we ask the question, I would just like to go around and have counselors give their, if they have any thoughts on the budget process and budget itself, I'll start with you, Counsel Jankie.
Respectfully, Your Worship, I have a couple of questions I'd like to ask, if that's right.
That's all possible, yes, sorry.
Great. Manager Warren, in regards to virtual training, I certainly respect the cost savings, and in a lot of ways, the direction the world is going, are you taking steps to make sure that your staff aren't missing out on the network opportunities that comes with group training, simply because in, in my own personal experience, a lot of times, that's more valuable than the training itself?
Yeah, so if an employee does want that opportunity to go in person, so I'll give an example, we have directors that actually have an opportunity to have in-person meetings with their peers. So Laura through finance, or Andrew through Leisure Services, or myself, Donette, has an opportunity to see clerks, we actually encourage them to go see their peers, because when you have that opportunity to see your peers, it's more than just talking with those subjects, it's having those conversations, to find out what's happening in their municipalities, and, and we do encourage that. One thing I, I do talk about virtual is that it's just an opportunity that if someone can't get to that place, right? So if there's a conference that's available, say, in Calgary, we're not going to fly to Calgary, we're going to make sure that we can maybe do that virtually that way. I can give you an example of my Marist Caucus. We used to only meet twice a year in person, now they've actually increased Marist Caucus meetings to every couple of months, and by having that, we actually can do that virtually and get more things done. But I do still encourage our employees to have that opportunity, to have that peer-to-peer discussions, because it is very valuable for them, especially when you're the professional in that field and you need to know more about what's going on, and it's, you can't get as much through virtual that way.
Absolutely. All right, next question, feel free to redirect this one if you like, but I went through the capital expenditures to the best of my ability, and I can't find myself a place where we could have done any better using amortization or internal loans, but would you and Director Masal agree that we have done our very best in that regard?
Yeah, so I'll start with this, Laura, then I'll pass it on to you, but we try our focus sometimes to see where we can make some efficiencies through internal loans. Projects are expensive, and, but we have to have those projects done, our infrastructure's behind. Jen has talked about infrastructure revitalization, we're actually using our gas tax funds now redirected to seven hundred thousand dollars a year to make sure we can get our roads and our sidewalks back, and it's set to take a long period of time, and seven hundred thousand dollars is not close enough for us to get to that process. When we look at projects that we can maybe fund over a number of years, we get that project done, Laura's done a really good job saying, okay, how can we make this happen, how can we make sure their infrastructure doesn't fall further behind? Do you want to give some examples of some things we've decided this year to put through internal loans to make sure that we can get that done this year, Laura?
Yeah, so even like something as simple as like the ice plant chiller, that was two hundred thousand, we've put it through as an internal loan, so what that means is it comes out of reserves, the money comes from reserves to pay for it, and then the leisure center, or leisure department has to pay back to that reserve over a period of time, instead of us going to get an external loan, they pay it back to the reserve instead of us paying to an institution. So we've, we've done this for years, it was done like when like Crescent Point Place was remodeled, usually any larger purchase, like even like a fire truck, pretty much anything. We haven't really had external loans until we had the Sparks Center, because really, we couldn't fund from our reserves the Sparks Center, because it was too large of a project with what we've done in the past. So even like the reservoir, they have internal loans to pay back, the landfill has some internal loans, utilities, lift stations, those all, they pay back so that we don't totally deplete our reserves, and we have some funds, so then we can take that money to reinvest into something else, but then we always have that money to give back, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Appreciate your diligence and expertise on that. Last question for me, then, is for Chair McCormick. You mentioned some cuts that came out of benefits. For the benefit of, no pun intended, those of us who are not on police commission, can you just elaborate a little bit on how that was achieved?
The cuts that were taken on benefits?
Yeah, you said that, didn't you?
No.
Oh. Well, I'm pleased to have misheard that, then.
Yeah, no, we, our...
Oh, your mic on, Ron.
I'm sorry, no, our wages and benefits are really CBA, you know, they're according to contracts. We weren't able to cut from there. Certainly not this, not in any way without cutting staff.
All right. Well, thank you. I apologize to the confusion. I was alarmed to hear that, so I'm pleased that I misheard. All right. Oh, a last thing, while I've got you. I respect that the costs of the two-factor authentication and backup server are high, but I applaud you for pursuing those. The cost of not having those things can be astronomical.
Well, and the other costs that we're, you know, are coming up with issues with paying RCMP for identification services, for, you know, if we go to child pornography case and all of that stuff, those are really out of our control, and, you know, there's not much we can do about them.
All right, thank you.
Council Corgan, oh, sorry, Council Jenke.
Oh, no, I was gonna say I'm done. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you very much. Council Corgan?
Thank you, Your Worship. Practically all the questions that I had were asked and answered, most of them for clarification sake. But the one that I would like clarified is a comment that was within the public comments about the new police vehicle. Chief Blunden, could you clarify as to how that is actually funded?
Yeah, although it shows us $100,000 in expense, but what happens is throughout the year, we get funding from the SGI. So SGI and the province fund us $400,000. Of that, there's $600, or sorry, $60,000, that's earmarked for the vehicle R and M. So what we do is we take some money aside, we put it into reserves, and then every few years, we pull that money back out of the reserves in order to purchase the vehicle new, in order to put it on the road. So the $100,000 that were actually earmarked for ours has actually come out of the reserves, and we've already had that in our budget previous years. So it's not really an added expense, it's come out of the reserves that we've already put into, so.
And that typically comes from grant money, then?
That is grant money that we're getting, and that's $60,000 every single year. That's earmarked from SGI. We keep a certain amount out to do vehicle maintenance and oil, gas, and all that, and then we take a portion of that, we put it into reserves roughly, give or take, I'd say about $35,000 to $38,000. So every third year, there's enough money to purchase a new vehicle to replace the old one that's on the road. So that money that we're pulling back out is actually money that we've already had in our budgets previously, so. And just to comment on the benefits, I know that was the question, and so, you know, benefits we're asking, we have to replace about $110,000 this year. We're short, and we're under budgeted right now by about $80,000 on benefits. So reality is, is, you know, the city pays a certain amount towards benefits, and so some of those benefits are, you know, your pension, CPP, EI, and everything else that goes along with that. And right now, we're just, we've been under budgeted for a few years, so we've got to play catch-up on that, so.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you, Council Corgan. Chair? Yes?
One thing about the vehicle, and this came up in the comments by the public about why this vehicle was outfitted with, you know, the fancy stickers and everything else, and why are we spending money on that? The fact is that we have to, those vehicles have to meet certain standards of appearance by the Saskatchewan Police Commission. And we have to meet those standards by, you know, what colors we put on, and so on and so forth. We've changed some things with this new vehicle and to make it look better. The design was by members of the police service on their own time. The decals were done locally, and it didn't cost any more to get a vehicle that stands out, and so that sort of answers the questions the public had about that.
Thank you, Chair McCormick. Grayson, welcome. Do you have any comments tonight?
Okay, wow. I don't think so. I, we didn't, we kind of discussed last meeting a couple of thoughts we had from our meeting, and we haven't had one since, so I don't think we have any more comments on that.
Do any councilors have any further comments? Sure, Laura?
All right, I made notes this time. So as with any budget deliberation, the goal is long-term growth and sustainability. I've been part of five previous budget deliberations, and this process was a lot different for me. It encouraged me, in a nutshell, this is the process I took, it encouraged me to ask a lot more questions. I asked the directors what projects and purchases were absolutely necessary versus what could possibly wait. Seventy-seven pages later, I had a lot of questions for them, and they did such a great job to answer them for me. I took all of that and compared that to the answers that, and the supporting costs, to the feedback and comments that were provided by the public. And then the balancing act begins, so I want to continue the level of service that our city provides along with supporting our current staff. We have a fantastic staff in our city. We don't want them to leave. We want to keep them happy. So that is a huge weight for me, along with a tax increase. I'm a taxpayer as well. I don't want to see a huge increase in taxes. So I appreciate all of the feedback from the public. I really, really hope that nobody feels like they can't call me at any time. My number is on our website, my email is on the website. I'm easy to track down, so if you have any comments or questions, please reach out at any time.
Thank you, Council Morissette. Council Richards?
Thanks, Your Worship. Yeah, I have, I think a lot of stuff's been said, but I just wanted to say I agree with Council Morissette on that piece. I don't want to see increased taxes either. It's gonna be six or eight bucks a month, or whatever it is on my house, too. I get that. I want folks, though, to know that we didn't trot out 10%, knowing that we were gonna get down to five. That was not the 4.9, or whatever. That was not the process that we did. We genuinely said to the department heads, bring us your budget, and we went out to the community and said, where do you not want us to cut? And I talked to a lot of people over the last month, and the message was clear, even from the youth council. Their message was harsh. We need you to do stuff for the business community. We need new businesses. We need more people in our community. Folks said clearly, fix our streets, don't cut money out of that. Good to hear that we haven't done that. So I appreciate it. There was some commentary around, you know, geez, we gotta cut wages, we gotta cut wages. And Police Commission Board Chair McCormick has already alluded to that. First off, we can't do that. We can't cut people's wages. We're governed by collective bargaining agreements or employment contracts. If we were to start breaking those, we end up in court, and that's gonna cost us far more than any savings we're ever gonna realize. But beyond that, I don't want to cut people's wages. I don't want to say to our public service, you have to make less money next year. We have good people here, right? We have people that are up at 2:00 in the morning, when it's minus 20, working on a sewer lift station thing. That's not fun. These guys on the street at 2:00 in the morning, our fire department, taking people out of burning homes. I am not gonna say to these people, you need a 10% pay cut. I won't do that. So that was whatever. So next up, we did talk to the business community quite a lot, or at least I'm gonna know that I did. They said some smart things to me. You know what, Jeff? When I need extra money in my business, I can't go back to my customers and say I need 5% more than I charged you last month. They can't do that. So the message is, find efficiencies. And we know that, we all know that, so we're asking the department heads to all do that. I see no new hires in any budgets this year, and I appreciate that. So thank you very much. That's important. That's how we can control things. The other thing is, I think folks need to know that just because a department head has the money in their budget today, doesn't mean they have to spend it. Oftentimes, they will return money back that goes into the city coffers, that goes to other projects next year. Might not even be a project in their department, and we appreciate that. So thank you all when you do that. That's important. I mentioned the youth council, and I think that's it. I appreciate the Team Waburn approach that is happening right now from our department heads, so that's enough from me.
Thank you, Council Richards. Council Corgan?
It's always tough being second or third. A lot of the comments have been said, but I just want to say thank you to everybody who was part of this process. It's been a long, arduous process, but a new one. This is the first year that we've involved the public, and it was an eye-opener. Your comments were heard. We can't always get down to the level that some, that everybody wants. We have to continue to invest in the community and infrastructure and services. That's what draws people in, that's what draws businesses here, and we have to continue doing that. The process needs to be reviewed on an annual basis, just like any other process or policy, you look to improve them. So once we're finished with this, I think we'll sit down as a council and see what we can do better next year, how we engage the public, and can we do it in a more efficient and better manner. Again, I just want to say thanks to everybody. It's a budget that I can support. It's an increase. No one ever wants to see a significant increase, but this is one that still maintains our services and our investments in infrastructure. I want to thank everyone.
Thank you, Council Corgan. Council Jenke?
Thank you, Your Worship. I should have taken you up on your offer to go first before, because most of the good points have been taken, but a couple things I will add. I appreciate all of the feedback, all of the engagement. I think one thing we can all agree upon is that more engagement is a good thing. In terms of feedback, the things I find most valuable, I mean, I'm open to all feedback. I like hearing what the number should be. I like hearing what is not a priority, what can be cut. But the singular most valuable thing I think I heard through this whole process was, don't cut this. What is the most important thing that we want to make sure we continue our investment in? And that's the kind of information that really feeds a decision-making process. We can go back to the department heads and say, this is what the community's priority is. I mean, I agree with the comments that streets certainly are a priority right now, but if there's one piece of feedback I can ask for more of, that's what it is. So I thank everybody for all their engagement, and everybody in administration for all their hard work. I know this is not an easy process on you.
Thank you. Well, I'll be repetitive, I'm sure, but the budget for 2023, I feel, is a very responsible budget. It protects and maintains our city services that all of our residents rely on, while at the same time keeping property taxes at an affordable level. The many different aspects of the budget were considered, debated by council and administration, while keeping in mind the impact on ratepayers and maintaining sufficient reserve balances. This is a budget that protects city during difficult times and prepares us to thrive and build a winning community as the economy picks up. On behalf of city council and staff, we thank the residents of Waburn for their feedback throughout this year's budget process. Your input helps Waburn continue into 2023 as a vibrant community for all. I want to add, I've been on council for 10 years now, and I know we have a very dedicated, committed staff throughout, whether it be from our administration, to our public works, to our emergency services, who all work very hard and are dedicated to this community. And I think we have that to be very thankful for, and I thank them for their service. And we don't want to cut them back to the point where they feel like they're not protected in their jobs, are not able to do their jobs properly. So I do support this budget, and I know it's hard for everyone to swallow a tax increase, but it is necessary, and I hope you understand that we've done everything we can to keep